All right, everyone, it's July 10th. We're going to call this meeting to order 2025. Right now, we're going to open. Has anybody got any public comment?
Jamal Schumpert.
Jamal. Has somebody got the clock? Got you. State your name and your district, please.
Jamal Schumpert, 2817 North River Streets, San Angelo, Texas. Board, I just want to tell you, before you guys tell me to go talk to your departments, I have. I actually even filed a complaint with TCEQ on the Tunaw Bridge area where you sell a house on Pulliam. I understand some of the damage was unavoidable, but the houses destroyed in my area, it was avoidable. The actual direction of the stormwater pathway makes us ask, and then it bottlenecks over a low area. It should have been bridges built. The only person that had adequate bridge was the Texas Railroad, and that's the one behind, yes, believe it or not, yes. It's a 14-foot bridge, and it's behind San Jacinto, and that's the area that didn't flood, fortunately, not too bad. I understand some of the areas outside of San Angelo, outside of that area, were unavoidable. But if we even look at what's happening today, there's eight to 10-foot weeds and tires and dumping all in that area. It's no wonder that our stormwater drain got blocked, leading to the houses being lifted onto the streets. This is a problem that your departments have, and I've talked to you guys, I even made a presentation, brought pictures last year, and you guys spent money buying all the stormwater drain equipment, but then you used it over there at the Red Arroyo and concrete that entire area and neglected all the other areas that you see today, which is in the north and the east side, where your low-income people are. Not to say that those people wanted that, but that was the direction of this board, the city managers in that department. That neglect, instead of just calling a blessing in a water-restricted area, we're calling it a disaster because we wasn't prepared. Clean our drains, at least on the north side where the recreation center is, because it's still about 15-foot of water, where people are playing basketball in water. Thank you.
Thank you, Jamal. Heather, anymore?
One staff announcement from Robert Diaz.
Robert? Robert, just to follow protocol, name and SOD.
Yes, sir. Good afternoon, council. My name is Robert Diaz, single member District 5, Karen Hesse-Smith. Work with the City of San Angelo Health Department, the Senior Registered Sanitarian. Just here to give some updates. We've received multiple calls from people about, you know, issues that they're in the flood areas and stuff. I do have, you know, it hits, I'm sure it hits everybody here personally, and I'd like to thank everybody, council, emergency response, all the PD, Police Department, firemen, everybody doing an exceptional job. You know, I just have an issue, it's not really, it's, everything's personal, and I'm sure it touches everybody here, you know. I have my kids, great-grandmother lives a block out of the quarantine area on 232 Pecan, and they have people going by, they've been cleaning out the house. We were there this weekend helping them clean up mess, and there's people just going by and tearing into their trash bags, and they're having to constantly re-bag all that stuff up, and it's been out there since Fri-. They've been starting to do stuff since Saturday morning when they've been able to get back into the house. I just wanted to make that known to y'all, but my main thing was just to thank y'all for everything y'all have done. That sheet that y'all put out was really helpful, that went out with all the emergency numbers that they put. This is an awesome thing, so I've been using it and directing people with that, you know, I'm just, my hat's off to all the staff, city manager, Rick Weiss, Mr. Michael Dane, and everybody here, all y'all's team. I just wanted to thank y'all for everything y'all have done. I know y'all have been boots on the ground since this weekend and haven't stopped yet. And that was just my main thing, I just wanted to bring up to y'all.
Robert, prayers to your family and all you're going through. We all are going through very similar things, many of the topics you brought up, Kelton and I discussed earlier today. Thank you so much for your time and your input.
No, thank you.
Anymore? That concludes public comment. We'll move into the special agenda. Comments regarding items on the special agenda may be made by the public when each item is discussed as outlined above. To participate, please sign in with a city clerk prior to the beginning of the meeting. Speakers will be called in order they signed in. Comments are limited to less than three minutes. Applicants, proponents, and appellantants are exempt from time limit above and instead must limit their remarks to less than five minutes. Item A is Consider Authorizing Order Continuing the Declaration of Disaster issued by the mayor related to the severe storm and flash flooding event that occurred on July 4, 2025. Brandon Dyson.
Thank you, Mayor. I think everyone knows, due to the disaster, the mayor did declare that disaster. The government code only allows that to continue for seven days, which tomorrow would be our seventh day, so we need city council in order to continue that, to approve an order continuing it, and in talking with Shane, the very minimum, we think 90 days to 120 days is going to be the estimated time for this. I have it now for 90 days, but of course, it's at council's discretion, and if you need any information from Shane, but that's the need today.
If we go 90, do we have the option to extend it?
Yes, yes. So you could continue again, and if everything works out perfectly and it can be terminated sooner, the mayor actually has the authority to do that in the order, so.
Well, I would hope we can do this in less than three months, so I would suggest that we stick with the 90 days. It's just a goal and a minimum timeline. With that, I'll open it up to council for questions.
So move.
I have a first and a second. Heather, do we have any public comment? All those in favor?
Hi.
Any opposed? With that, item passes, or agenda item passes 7-0. We'll move into item B, Consider Approval of Emergency Debris Collection Task Force Order 1 with Saris Environmental under RFP 01, excuse me, OP-01-20 for an amount not to exceed $1 million sourced from all solid waste fund balance and authorizing city manager to negotiate and execute all related documents. Shane, you're on.
Thank you, Mayor. As you said, we do have a current contract with Saris Environmental for debris management for the city for just such a situation as we're going through right now. This will be for a task order for this specific, for this specific event moving forward in a not-to-exceed $1 million amount currently. If for some reason we do find more debris or there's any other issues that arise during this time, we will bring another action back to council before we would move forward with anything else. So again, this is a current, this, this, this task order will be for not to exceed $1 million. Just want to briefly go over kind of how this works and how we're going to be moving forward as well. After this action today, we will provide notice proceed, and they will start mobilizing crews to San Angelo this next week, excuse me, and as they, as they're moving, as they're doing that, we will be trying to be out there with some citizens as we're going through to make sure, especially that hardest-hit area where we saw the fast-moving, the swift-moving waters that we saw some much destruction, working with those property owners, homeowners, residences in that area to make sure that they are prepared and ready as they get here so we can follow the FEMA guidelines that have been laid out. So we would have the ability to hopefully seek any, any relief that they may, that they may allow for us. And so, again, moving forward, moving forward with that, so they may, citizens in that area probably start seeing city crews this next week, trying to get out there, work with them, help them, assist them in any way that we can to prepare as we're moving, as we're getting ready for Saris Environmental to get here.
If they have questions, Shane, who would they call?
If they have any questions, they can-
On their waste?
On the waste and any of that currently right now. Of course, it is on, that, what Mr. Diaz talked about just a minute ago, that flyer is on our website at sanangilo.gov/july4. So that is there. That will give them a lot of information. Other information, if they need it, they can contact, they can contact my office at 325-657-4206, and we can direct them to folks that can help them there. They can also contact our customer service division as well, too, at the Water Utility, so they can contact that number as well, so. But again, as we're moving forward, they, that we are planning on starting, so we give everybody time, hopefully the end of this weekend. I know everybody had to try to continue on with their lives as best they could, so again, we're not wanting to start this too many, too soon, because with the debris removal company, they're only going to make two, possibly three passes, and that's kind of where we are in our contracted range right there. So as we're moving forward, we want to make sure we're giving citizens time, time to make sure that they are able to, what we call muck and gut, basically get in there and get their everything, all the debris, out of their homes, whether that's flooring, that's furniture, white goods, anything, electronics that have been ruined, get those out to the curb, and so we want to give them plenty of time. And again, we want everybody to place it behind, behind the curb or at the edge of pavement. Please do not put anything in the streets. Kind of moving, we will, we will start in the hardest-hit area. We will break these up into sectors. They're going to bring, they're going to start off with two to three separate units that they're bringing in for debris collection. We're going to start, again, in the hardest-hit area. We're going to break these areas up into zones. We're going to work these, work their, their units in zones, and so we will be working jointly with them to get them in here, and again, start with the hardest-hit areas first, and then moving our way north and northwest up into that part of town. And again, this first, this first run, we'll be getting that stuff off the curb, so if there is, if there is the need, they've run out of room in front of their homes, we'll get this out of the way, and then we'll give them another chance to continue to bring more debris out as we move through the rest of, the rest of the city. And so that's kind of how we're processing this moving forward. Want to, again, stress separating these items, keep your, keep your construction debris, whether that's flooring, carpet, wall, furniture, all of those type things in one pile, electronics, whether that's TVs, computers, any, any electronic devices, keep that in one pile, and then also your white goods, your refrigerators, dryers, washers, dryers, any, any item like that, keep those in a separate pile as well, too. We did not have a lot of tree or brush damage, so we're not really worried about brush piles, but if they're, for whatever reason, you did see damage, you had damage in trees or landscaping, anything, make sure that is in a separate pile as well, too. And again, we will get around to get that picked up. Please, no household hazardous waste at this time, no oils, gas, fuels, cleaning supplies, please keep those back away from the edge of the curb. We will be working with Republic Services here in the near future to set up a separate time to start working through collecting any household hazardous waste that may be available. But we will set that up, you know, two weeks, 30 days down the road, trying to work, let all of this big debris get out of the way, then we'll take, take a lot of that. Those, those things cannot be put in our landfill, so that's why we want to make sure that they are not intermingled within that.
Shane, have a question.
Yes, sir.
This is up for $1 million, but what if we aren't here long enough? So tell me, this is based on tiered in tonnage, so it may not be $1 million.
You're correct, you're correct. It may not be. If, this is, this is just an estimate, just kind of based on kind of the numbers that we have seen so far, and based on what this company has seen in other locations with similar incidences, that they gave us this estimate. So again, it may turn out that it's not this much, it may be reduced, but again, based on their best guess, their best estimate of what they've seen in other municipalities across the country, that's what this was based on. So again, if they don't, if they, if they don't haul that much off, then they don't charge us, so.
Do these get a contingency, too? I know some contracts we do get a contingency for an overage.
By, by state law, we get up to 25%, but again, I don't, we want to make, we want to make sure that we are, we, as we move through this, we're keeping, we're keeping council up to date, but I mean, if it's a, if it's $1 million and $10,000, we'll, we'll use that, we'll use the provision in state law, but if we're talking large sums of money, we want to bring that back to council for your approval.
I think council lets know if we get anything over $1 million.
Yeah, yeah, so we will, we will bring that back to council at that point. So again, and then regular household trash, again, you can't, please do not bag any of the stuff you're sitting out for debris management. Regular household trash, if you still do not have a cart, you can bag that, please place that at, on your regular pickup day, you can place that at the curb, and Republic Services will continue to pick that up. As I stated, I think earlier in the week, you know, recycling and bulk has been suspended currently. We are going to reevaluate that with Republic coming into tomorrow evening, and we will, again, we will, if we're going to change our cycling on that, we will get back with the, with the, with the public, and we will get something out to everybody, again, to keep everybody updated on trash updates. And just quickly, just so you know, the numbers that we're looking at right now, kind of what this was based off of, currently, just through our, through the iStat surveys, damage surveys that we've done, looking at 1,520 surveys that have been completed, 294 affected homes, 705 of them with minor damage, 463 with major damage, and 58 that basically in, in how the form goes, it would be considered destroyed. Now, not all of those were, again, like the ones that were swept off their slabs, but again, sustained enough, sustained enough damage that they met the threshold in, within the state guidelines to be considered destroyed, a complete loss. Again, we want everybody, again, to make sure that they are working, again, as, you know, we don't want to put people in a rush and a bind, they've been through a traumatic event, but again, want to reiterate the importance of getting all of this to the curb if, and if people are not able to, if they are not physically able to or don't have the means or manpower, we do have a lot of assistance coming to this town that's going to be free of charge for people to be able to, to utilize, and so we want them to make sure they reach out for that assistance, to, to make sure, we don't want people living in, in dangerous situations or their house becoming a dangerous situation to live in. So we want to make sure that people are actively seeking to, to clean out their house the way they need to do it, and again, we do have that assistance coming. Again, they can reach out to our, on our website, we have the information on our website, and we'll continue to be posting updates there at the sanangilo.gov/july4. Again, and that's also, again, to reassure everybody that they're, while financial assurance is not necessarily guaranteed, but there are, there are, again, we've, we've had very generous people donating to the city, donating to San Angelo Area Foundation and others, and, and again, we're, or again, we're hopeful that we will see some federal assistance as well. There's no guarantee, but we're hopeful. So again, we know that hopefully there will be some financial assistance for these folks as they try to rebuild and try to get their life back and going, and so with that, if there's any questions from council, I'll be happy to entertain them.
I'll start down here on the end with Mary, and we'll work our way to the other side.
Thanks, Shane.
Sorry, Tommy.
Do we have a, what the threshold is for us to get to, to get that, potentially get the federal assistance?
There's, there's two, there's the, there's the individual, which was the iStat, which we discussed earlier. I believe in, in my conversations with our emergency management coordinator, I believe that we have reached that threshold from that side. We are still surveying on the, on the PSTAT side, which is the public entity side, which is the city, the county, government-based organizations. We are still working through that damage assessment currently to see if we, as a municipality, as a county, as a government entity, will, will qualify for that or not. We're not there yet, but we're working towards those numbers.
One, the reason I ask that, some of the people that, as I was going on the route, they have a lot of pride, and they don't think that they've been affected or, or, you know, someone else has it worse than they do. And I was explaining that this helps get us to that threshold, it just increases our odds.
It does, and, and the more, the more information we have, the more knowledge we have, the better position we as a city, or as a county even, are going to be in our efforts to try to seek assistance from the federal government.
One of the things, too, that I, it is just kind of an FYI, but when, in, coming across some of those people, the first thing I say, I'm not asking your social security number, I don't need anything like that. This is just to help, help get us so that we can help you more, but that just, if y'all encounter that, that seems to be a diffuser, and it increases their, their willingness to let us assist them.
Correct, and, and again, we're, we just want damage, we're, I mean, we just want to be able to assess the damage and know what that is. We're, we don't, we don't need personal information, don't want personal information, again, just whatever they're willing to give us is great, but again, it is to assess the damage as well. I have also heard, and we can address this maybe later, and with some other communication as well, that we can send out, but, but one of the concerns that's brought to me is that people may be reluctant to, to participate or to be active in this because they're afraid it may affect their insurance or something like that. This event will not, this event will not affect that, that, I mean, that is strictly a floodplain management issue, not necessarily, this, this was much greater than the floodplain. We, we saw things that were way past the 500-year event floodplain delineation on the map, and so as we move forward, again, we just want to reiterate that, that please continue this, don't worry about those type of issues, again, those will not affect folks. Continue, continue to provide this information and, and participate in everything that is available to them.
Mary, thank you. Karen?
All good, thank you.
Patrick?
Hey, Shane. On the, so the bag trash and debris and appliances, is Republic going to handle all the bag trash, or is Saris grabbing all that as well?
No, Republic will handle all the bag trash.
Gotcha.
And so that will, that will be with, with the routine pickup on, and again, we have gone back to regular routes, so whatever your day normally is for trash collection will continue to be your day for regular trash collection.
Do they need to try to get it in their trash hands, or is Republic going to set up a time to kind of, kind of like we have bulk week, to come in and grab all that?
Yeah, again, just try to keep it to household trash. If, if it is debris of any kind, please put it in our debris piles for Saris to pick up, but you know, if it's, you know, say newspapers, I know a lot of people don't do newspapers anymore, but you know, whether that, you know, food, food waste, food trash, you know, food trash, you know, anything like that that would be normal household waste, plastics, those type things, please discard those in the bags, and, and we will take those.
Do we know, sorry, I guess, is Republic going to set up a time to come get all that, or are they just going to be trying to get it on their daily routes?
They, they, they're just doing it on their daily, daily routes. Again, still playing some catch-up, again, as we were disrupted last week, again, trying to play some catch-up within that as well, but again, I think, I visited with Joe Spennel this morning, most of their routes are on time, they're not having a lot of difficulties at this point. A little bit slowing them down because of some of the, some of the rerouting of the traffic flows that we have here in town currently right now, slowing them down a little bit, but they're really doing, really doing good on time. Tomorrow, because Friday last week was the, really the big day that was, that was truly missed last week, and so tomorrow may be a lot slower than normal getting around, but they believe that once they get through that Friday route that they will have next week, that everything will, it should be a lot closer to normal time and, and when you normally see the trash truck come through your neighborhood.
And then on this, this cost, is any of it expected or possibility of being recouped through FEMA?
If we, if we, as a, as a, you know, the city and the county, and as long as we within Tom Green County, if we meet the levels for the PSTAT surveys and we meet that level and we do receive a FEMA declaration for the, the public entities, then yes, this is the Saris, what we're spending here on the Saris contract, maybe not all of it, but some of it definitely would be hopefully eligible for some assistance back from, from the federal government, so.
Gotcha, thank you.
Patrick, good questions. Harry? Joe? Welcome to San Angelo.
Thanks. You, you did say it earlier, there will be multiple passes, correct? So if someone doesn't have it out there?
The first time, correct. We, be at least two, possibly three passes. We will, we will be monitoring that as, as the process goes through, and, and again, if there's a few one-offs here or there, you know, my city crews can assist, but again, we want this primarily this because through this contract and how, and through the, and the next, the next item that we have up here with the monitoring company, for us to seek federal assistance for any of this, it has the very specific guidelines on how it's picked up, how it's disposed of. All of it has to be monitored by a third-party company, so again, we want to make sure that we are getting as much of this as we can through this contract. Again, if there's a few one-offs here and there, you know, sit either through our partnership with Republic, through bulk pickup and/or through city, city crews, we, I mean, we're, we're going to help folks, but.
And I don't know, you said you were going to set up like a zoning map, possibly?
Yeah, well-
When you get with them, maybe, okay, this pass will be this time.
And, and we, and, and we will, as, as we, as we work with Saris next week and we are creating these zone maps, and, and, of course, timing is always, is always varies, but again, we will try to, try to kind of be out in front of that and let folks know a day or two ahead of when they will be coming through their neighborhoods and doing the collection.
I think most people are ready, it's just, there's some that aren't.
There are, but, but we have a lot of, we have, our, the volunteer group, and I do want to give a shout-out to all of our volunteers and our co-ed, and everybody that's been working out there, they have been phenomenal. I've, I've been doing this for 25 years, I've been through, gosh, what, six, seven, eight of these guys, and I, and I, we have never had a response from our volunteer community, I mean, they've always been great, everybody's always been there, but this, these guys, they, I mean, they are, they have been spot-on this time, they have taken so much weight off of the shoulders of the city staff, it's, it's been incredible, so I want to give a shout-out for them, so. But again, you know, as, as we're moving forward and getting these volunteers, because we do, as they've been out there, they're, they've noticed a lot of people are not wanting to participate or not because they, they are afraid, either one, they, they can't physically do it, or two, they're afraid that if they do pull the sheetrock off the walls, if they do do things like that, they're not going to have the means to, to replace it or to fix it, and so again, we want, we want people to know that there is assistance out there, and so to please reach out and, and seek out that assistance, because again, we, we want people to get that stuff out, and we want, we want to help, we want to help everybody.
Thank you.
I don't have a question, mine's more of a comment, hopefully helpful comment, comments maybe to, to the public. There are going to be folks coming into, into this town, if they're not already here, that are from out of town, that will say they are there to help people rebuild, to recover, rehab their damaged properties. To the extent possible, and it won't be entirely possible, but to the extent possible, I would suggest to those folks that are affected by this, that need assistance in rebuilding, rehabbing, or recovering their property, use local contractors that you know and that have done this type work before. There will be folks that are here only for themselves and the amount of money they can make. There will be people that will ask for money upfront before any work is performed. Do not pay people upfront before they perform the work for you, especially if you do not know them. That's going to be hard for some because they are in such dire circumstances. They are going to need assistance quickly, and they are going to need to have things done to their homes quickly. They are going to jump at the chance to have somebody do it, but to the extent they can, they should use local people. I, I want to echo what Shane has said. I have had the, the, I'll say, the fortunate ability to have just a little bit closer seat to the front, and what Shane said, the amount of cooperation and collaboration and teamwork among the folks that have been working on this day in and day out has been amazing. It really has. Somebody said to me this morning after a meeting, this is my sixth one of these type real crisis events I've been through. He said, this one has been, at, as the police chief said, we have been at our worst in terms of disaster, but the best has risen to the top, and the comment was, this is one of the best efforts I have seen in terms of the cooperation, the collaboration, and the collegiality among those working on it. So I want to say thank you again, as Shane did, to those people, that's the volunteers, that's the city staff, that's our police department, that, that's our fire department, that's all of the volunteer organizations in town that have stepped up. This is, even in the midst of its worst, San Angelo has risen to its best.
Councilman, to your point, tho- those folks are here. I've visited with two, two property owners so far that have been approached by-
Out of town.
People from out of town, telling them that they will be more than happy to clean up their house and haul it off for, for X number of dollars. They're, they're already here, so again, please beware, and again, we will have, we will have, we have people mobilizing into our community to help volunteer, vetted volunteer groups, and they will be in identifiable shirts and things like that, and so again, the- in identifiable shirts and things like that. And so again, the, and they are free, they are free of charge. They will not charge anybody a dime to come in and assist these folks. So again, yeah, please be aware, be aware of that.
Mike, Harry had a comment?
I do. I want to follow up a little bit what Shane just said. They are in the community. You see a lot of people don't know where they're going. And sometimes that makes it a little difficult for somebody that's been around as long as I have, because I have a tendency to want to get where I'm going. And they don't have any idea. So they're stopping in the middle of the road, they're turning without a turn signal. So they're in the town. And unfortunately, as Mr. Hebert said, some people will interact with them and end up losing money or not having the house rehab the way it needs to be. So I don't know that anybody up here or sitting down there can say it often enough. Do not, do not interact with these out-of-town people. Do it with the local people that will be here when that job is done. Be here when they need some additional repairs.
I make a motion to approve? Can I get a second? All right, I've got a first and a second. Any public comment? Without one, we'll take a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes 7-0. We'll move to item C. Consider Approving an Emergency Purchase Pursuant to Texas Local Government Code Section 25202A2 for Debris Collection Monitoring Contract with True North Emergency Management LLC in the amount not to exceed $350,000 sourced from solid waste fund balance and authorizing city manager to negotiate and execute all related documents. Shane Kelton, side two.
Yes, sir, Mayor. We have, again, this is the second part of that first one that we discussed a while ago. As Saris comes in here and does this, they are required to have a third-party monitoring firm that watches everything as they are actually loading the product from the curb into their trucks to make sure that the, all the loads are consistent and they're not intermingled or commingled. And then they also have to be there at the landfill as the trucks pull into the landfill and are weighed. And they have to identify that and actually quantify visually what, what's in the truck. And so again, required, this is one of those FEMA guidelines requirements for us to be able to seek any assistance that may be available to us.
Any questions? Got a move, motion to approve by Tommy. Can I get a second?
Second.
Second by Karen. All, any public comment, Heather? No public comment. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes 7-0. Item four, is there any follow-up or administrative issues? I will say we are having a press conference at the annex, I mean, not at the annex, we're going to do it at City Hall.
Yeah, City Hall.
City Hall, 2:00 PM tomorrow. Anybody else have any follow-up or administrative issues?
Move, we adjourn.
Got a first?
Second.
I got a second by Harry Thomas. Anybody opposed? All in favor of closing it, say aye.
Aye.
Motion, but carry 7-0. This meeting's adjourned.